...of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on its ancient, underdog, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We'll open the school committee meeting for Monday, February 13th, 2023. I have a motion to approve the bills.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? Any none, all in favor? Thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the school committee meeting, January 26th, 2023.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Meyer for the celebrations.
All right. So first I'll apologize. It's great to have a huge turnout like this, but I should have, probably should have moved us to the auditorium when I saw this many people were being recognized. But, so we need to be a little cozy. Don't worry, most of you guys can leave soon if you want. So to start with the celebrations, we'll have our elementary principal and Ms. Silvio and assistant principal, Ms. Primari, Pia Marini.
All right. Good evening. Our, we're recognizing staff and students for December, January, and February. Our first staff member is Nancy Munus.
Hi. So the way we do things at the elementary school is staff nominate each other as well as nominate students, and then based on that, we select our, our award recipients. So our first one is Nancy Munus. Nancy was nominated and continues to consistently be nominated weekly by several colleagues. She, she is recognized for her talent of being multilingual. She has picked up Portuguese very fluently. She speaks Spanish and she speaks English very fluently. So she's able to help with so many families at elementary level as well as the district level. But at the elementary, we do a lot of outreach to homes, and so we're super grateful. Nancy's always right there. She's timely. She follows through and she supports relationships between our families and our staff. One of the nominations that came in, there were actually 17 of them, but this is one that I will, I will read. "I can't say enough about Nancy's commitment to families here at TDS. She has really jumped into her new role, and she has helped me have many difficult conversations with families. She's supportive of both the family, the teacher, and the student. She does this all with kindness and grace, and she responds promptly to all our needs. I'm so happy to have Nancy as a resource for all of our families and, of course, for me too." So congratulations.
Our next one is our student for December, and it's Grady Pool.
So Grady was nominated by Ms. Zengraff for her leadership during the play that recently was put on by the district. She is responsible and a natural leader. She is always kind, and due to her responsibility, she earned a special trust from Ms. Zengraff to be given additional responsibilities, and she did all of it with such maturity and grace. She always goes above and beyond, and we're happy to recognize her for her leadership.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great job.
Okay, our next Staff of the Month for January is Katie Dunn. Katie was nominated by multiple people in the building as well. So she was nominated by members of her ESL team, content teachers that she works with, and then from administration. She is collaborative, supportive, and solution-oriented. During access testing, she sat with the administration to problem solve spacing, timelines, there's a lot that goes into all of that. She created schedules for us to complete access testing in a timely manner so that we could get right back into our regular service routine. We did our entire building in less than a month, which has never been done before. So her creative problem solving, we can't say enough about that. Her colleagues appreciate the time that she spent training, making sure that they were comfortable. She trained content teachers as well as some brand-new ESL teachers to the team this year. And so we really appreciate, you know, her supportive leadership role that she plays in her PLC, in the classroom, on our leadership team, and within her department while we're piloting a whole lot of new stuff this year. So congratulations to Katie. And then we have two students from the same classroom for January. We have Lilianis Rivera Santos and Carly Henry. Both of these students were nominated by their teachers for their exemplary effort and progress demonstrated this year. They both came down to the office, and they were both so proud to share their consistent data chart, data chats and charts with their teachers and with the administration for all of their hard work that they put into that. They've been coming all year to celebrate their success. They are driven and motivated to do well, and they are asking to see their data as evidence of their progress as they showed. So they are working super hard for us.
Our next staff is Sam Kenyon.
Sam was nominated by her co-teacher, several colleagues within the Special Education Department, and administration. Sam constantly goes above and beyond to offer support and guidance as the department chair. She meets weekly with administration to check in, be reflective, and stay on top of any concerns or upcoming meetings. She genuinely believes in all kids and that they can be successful. She is passionate about our co-teaching model, and she begs to leap in this year. She is reflective and supportive of all of her colleagues. She brings positive energy and joy to her job, even when it can feel really hard. One nomination was written that I recorded here, there were several, but this is one. "Sam has all the answers. She is positive, open-minded, and so knowledgeable. If she doesn't know the answer for something off the top of her head, which is rare, she will always get to the bottom of a question. She has been my go-to person for bouncing ideas off and the go-to person for many people within our department. She always focuses on students first."
Next student is Guadalupe Castillo. So Guadalupe was nominated by Ms. Forges for her passion and dedication to learning. She came in as a beginning multilingual learner, and her desire to learn has all, has her already performing at grade level. She is such a hard worker, an inspiration to all within our entire school community. Her teacher says that she embodies what it means to be a safe, respectful, and responsible student. She has a first-grade book buddy that she's been reading to regularly. Guadalupe has a true commitment to her learning and extends beyond her school community. Congratulations.
All right, now for our middle school recognition. Principal Harder.
So we have two for each grade and for each staff. We did a little Staff of the Winter. My first person to bring up is Ms. Taomi Cole. So Taomi was nominated by multiple teams, and this is what they said. "Mrs. Cole is nominated for her amazingly positive personality, for, yes, for her ability to be flexible with schedules and for her caring attitude for all students in grades seven and eight. Taomi is a team player, and it shows in her daily interactions with all staff. She always has a friendly hello and a smile for staff and students. Taomi stepped up when it was needed this past fall, and it was greatly appreciated by all. She's a leader amongst her team and a value to our school." Our next staff is Tiffany Nahara. Now last year, Tiffany and Taomi were a team, so they know each other well. Congratulations. Mrs. Nahara was also nominated by multiple teams and staff. She goes above and beyond every day for her students in her classroom, and she makes her content accessible. Students are engaged in lessons, and she adapts not only the content but also the environment, which I've seen on a regular basis, to make the lessons manageable. She is a team player and is always willing to lend a hand. Now for students, we have a couple from grade five. Can Matthew and Samaya come on up? Wait, I'm gonna redraft some accolades. Hold on. Okay, so both of them were nominated by their teaching teams. We have for Matthew, he is a hard-working and he is kind to all of his peers. In the classroom, he perseveres and is determined to get his work done. He makes everyone that he meets smile instantly. When coming in from recess, he is the first child to open the door and says thank you when it is held for him. Matthew is the type of kid you want as your friend. Samaya is a student that lends a helpful hand, cares for her friends, participates in band, and tries her best every single day in all of her classes. All of her teachers find her consistently hardworking, responsible, respectful, positive, and honest. Her engagement and task completion within the class shows her motivation to learn more.
Congratulations. Good job.
We have two sixth graders, Hayden Kaiser and Sofia Santos. Hayden has been chosen for Student of the Month, not only for her persistent effort, but also for her outstanding attitude. Hayden is conscientious about her work, but what makes her really stand out is her ability to get along with everyone and to try to smooth over any issues among peers. For anyone who's ever worked in middle school, there's no such thing. She is someone who stays calm and can be a real problem solver and a leader in the classroom. Her peers know they can count on Hayden for help, and she is always willing to help them. Sofia. Sofia works diligently at achieving success, and she takes the initiative to help other students to be successful. Without being asked, Sofia has built strong relationships with her peers through empathy, respect, and joy, and she exhibits these traits daily. Whether reminding classmates they have banned or what the homework is for that night, Sofia takes joy in seeing those around her experience their own success as well. From the seventh grade team, we have Andrew Desdada and Jocelyn Ziegler. So Andrew was nominated because Andrew is a good role model. He will work with anyone and is very cooperative. He seeks extra help when he needs it, and he makes sure to complete any work when he is absent. Andrew is kind and pleasant to everyone. Jocelyn is a great role model. She is an exemplary student. She goes above and beyond in her school activities as well. She is an extremely well-rounded student, involved in many extracurricular activities. She is hardworking, dedicated, and collaborative. For our seventh and eighth grade team, we have Alexis Gower and Jim Boykagatun. For our seventh and eighth, eighth grade team, we have Caleb Despotopoulos and Sudi Palcalderon. So Caleb has been working really hard in trimester two and has made great leaps towards advocating for his education. Very helpful. He is receptive to teacher feedback and applies it towards improving his work. He is very polite and cooperative in class. We are finally done, sorry.
So the high school, Principal Servach?
Good evening, everyone. So at the high school, we have an advisory period once a month, and during that advisory period, students and staff nominate each other for this recommendation. I'm gonna start with a staff member. His name is Jack Gillette. Couldn't be here tonight. Mr. Gillette's an English teacher here at the Clinton High School, and this is what the student said about him. "The way Mr. Gillette teaches and the way he helps me out when I or others need help is outstanding. When I ask for help, he explains to me with extra detail and takes the time to help me, even if I need more help. He's a great teacher and a great person, and is willing to go above and beyond for me and the other students." The second student was Mr. David Hilton. Mr. Hilton is a technology education teacher here at the high school. What the student said about Mr. Hilton is, "Mr. Hilton goes above and beyond for his students, coming in when he's not feeling well, and not being harsh with students when their work isn't on time, and giving them a second chance when some of their work is wrong. Overall, I believe that Mr. Hilton is a very deserving, obscene, recognized for all of the work he does." Not only do students nominate teachers, teachers nominate students. The first thing we have is Noah Pishak. Noah takes great pride in his work. Honest project, he not only types his work, but also uses outstanding computer graphics. His last project was extremely well-done and demonstrates the skills our students should be gaining in high school. Noah always puts all his efforts into his studies. When he needs help, he asks questions and does not let time pass by being confused. He is a model student. He asks questions in class, and when he wants to make sure he's on the right track to do his homework, he'll even stop back after school to make sure he's on target for success. Noah is genuinely kind and caring. He always asks me how my day is. He always thinks, thanks me for the things I help him do. He is kind and compassionate to all the other students around him. Noah is the sunshine of my everyday, and I am so thankful he is my student. And the last one I have is Chris Bayard. Not only do students and staff do recommendations, but sometimes administrators. So I received a phone call earlier this month from a woman who told me a story about shopping at Anford Supermarket and seeing some teenagers dressed in CHS cheer uniforms in the store. While in the store, the team's cheerleaders were very well-behaved, not loud or getting out of their ways, but polite, quiet to themselves. One of the cheer, I'm sorry, when the woman was in line, her basket was overflowing. One of the cheerleaders, who we found out was Chris, asked if she could help the woman with the basket. The woman refused, but then the cheerleader, Chris, asked again if she could help the woman, and she agreed. The woman said to me, "This act of kindness and generosity has restored her faith in today's youth, contrary to what is being said and seen on the news. She was happy to see that the students from Clinton High School are so kind and mature, and she wanted me to let everyone know this."
So I got one last person to recognize. Every year, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has a banquet, and each superintendent is allowed to invite one student. They're pretty, the criteria is, is pretty much up to each district how they want to select a student, but typically we look at our, you know, students who are top, top performers in their GPA and their grade, our seniors, and involved in extracurricular activities, and we want to talk to guidance, talk to the administration, and this, this gentleman's name kept coming up in those conversations, so he gets to join me for lunch March 14th at Holy Cross. So I'd like to recognize our superintendent's award winner, Owen Brightow. Do you want to do like a fake shake?
All right, I think that concludes our celebrations. Sometimes people like to step in the hall for a picture, and that's fine if you guys are interested in doing that.
Lots of folks like to stay the duration.
The rest is a business meeting, so we will not be offended if you choose not to stay. But thank you for coming out.
Bye-bye.
His co-convent is on.
Before, I thought it was here for like public comment. So I'm sure he wasn't going to skip it, but maybe they were just friends or family.
I know those guys a lot, like him, Raymond, Brian.
Zion, sometimes Zion.
Phil Sanders.
They're all from the same group.
I don't see a flash of that.
She's on.
Okay.
Mr. Sir Matt, do we have a student rep tonight? Okay. All right, we're going to bring the meeting back. Anything from the CTA? There's nothing on, Rob. We could talk all night.
She's like, no, she's like, no, but hold on.
Actually, things are moving along pretty well with a non-contract year and not one coming up for a while. Things have been pretty quiet when we're talking about recognizing people. I was thinking, as I was sitting here, we've had a few hiccups with our town health insurance as it changed to a new provider. And I know that's not your expertise, but I wanted to say that Mr. Kittredge, the town treasurer, has been very responsive when I've called him lately. And because dealing with Blue Cross and Blue Shields has been rather difficult, and he just goes, "Let me handle it. I'll send it up to my people." So he's been very responsive on several, several issues. And so when we're in the process of recognizing, I'd like to recognize Mr. Kittredge as helping the teachers.
Thank you.
I have one, Robin, I have one thing. I just want to, and I know after we settled the contract, you mentioned contracts the last time. We settled all three, and the board all thanked you and the union as a whole. But after the last couple of weeks, what I saw go on in Woburn. Yeah. It makes me appreciate, and not just you, and I'll get to Steve, is that when we did the negotiations, and I'll turn over to Matt in a second. You know, even the days that we didn't see eye to eye and we came down to compromise, we get frustrated. Never once in all three of your bargaining units did anyone ever threaten or mention or sic, any of that nonsense. And over the last couple of weeks, and I've watched what went on there with those kids that didn't have school for a week, it made me appreciate just as much. Please pass that on, and Steve too. When you went going to our breakout groups, you know, Steve's the one that, Matt and I didn't crunch any numbers, believe me. You know, Steve's the one that could say. He's the one that could go back and say, here's, you know, and he did all the work. So to Steve and to your bargaining, I just really want to thank you. And if there's anyone else that hasn't, then.
I have nothing to add.
I just really appreciate it as the last couple of weeks.
No, I just, I think.
Thank you. I will, I will put that out as a memo to the three different schools.
It's a testament to the working partnership that we have with our teachers and how much respect that we have for our teachers and everything that they do.
Well, I tell our new teachers every year, you know, when we hire that big pool, it seems the last few years, that we are family in Clinton, and we take care of each other through the good times and the tough times. But we talk it out, we work it out, and we always come together for the betterment of the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, nobody from the PTA?
She can't see PTA.
Back over to you, Steve.
I don't think there's any public comment.
Oh, yeah, you know, I keep missing out. Let me make that big, a little bit bigger.
All right, just a couple of quick staffing updates. Rachel Gibson, who was serving as our before and after-school care coordinator, running that program at the elementary school, has transferred to a pre-K IA position at the elementary school. So she's going to be giving up the before and after-school coordinator position that was posted. We are in the process of trying to fill it. We did most of our interviews. We're moving along in that process. I'm hoping to get someone finalized this week to maybe start right out shortly after break, hopefully. But Rachel's been great. She's kind of doing both roles right now, and she's willing to support the transition, so. And Lynn Heavy, the CMS reading teacher, she has put in for a maternity leave request. And as you know, we normally, those are certain levels of protections with those. I met with her to go over the particulars. So I think we're all set. It shouldn't be towards the end of the year, though. Some quick updates on the MSBA and CMS project. So it's been a busy few weeks. Starting at, you know, the 23rd, we started, we did the tri-council meeting. I guess there's actually change to the 26th, right? But we did a tri-council meeting. I know at the last school committee meeting, LPA and Doran Woody are here. We distributed community and staff student surveys. We did the focus visioning sessions, which were basically meetings with all those groups of people there, small virtual meetings with LPA, and just basically talking to everyone about, you know, you talk to the nurses about like what are their needs, or the food service director, what are their needs, and just sort of what are their visions? What do they want to see? There was a group of us that was able to tour three middle schools on the 26th as well. And the 30th, we held an interactive virtual community session. I know, you know, some of you guys, I know, attended. It was, I thought it was a productive session. Wasn't as well-attended as I had hoped. I feel like most people were there already kind of had a. Yeah, they're already kind of connected to the project a little bit, but it was a good session nonetheless. February 3rd, we did student focus group visioning session. So the same facilitator did all these visioning sessions. On the 30th, he did one with the students in the morning. That was a great one. It was great to hear. It was really, it was really interesting to hear what the students had to say about that building. And, you know, and it's a lot of things that we probably think about, and they're just very blunt about, so. And then in the afternoon, there was a same type of session with the faculty. Like I said, all facilitated by their educational consultant. Then the following week, the week of the 6th, we had a whole bunch of other visioning sessions with specific groups of teachers. So we met with like the 4, 5, 6 lead teachers, the 7, 8 team leaders. I know one was with music teachers and special ed and EL. And we met with all these little groups to do the same type of exercise about, you know, what are features you'd want to see in your room? What are features you'd want to see? You know, where would you like to be located? All those types of, all those types of things. So we're pretty much done with that. We have a meeting tomorrow. I have a couple of meetings tomorrow. But one of them tomorrow is to start looking at sort of, based on these visioning sessions and what we heard from people, how does that sort of translate to really kind of what the MSBA kind of square footage template is? And what are the things that align really well? And what are things that we might have to say? You know, if this is something, you know, you're asking for all this, your teachers want all this, and they're only going to reimburse you for this. You know, and then those are decisions we'd have to make later. So that will be going on this week. Also, we're supposed to be meeting with Tripell Moore for our OPM, and Mike Ward and I are supposed to be meeting to try to start sorting out a few issues. But one of them is to start looking with our bond council about the debt capacity for the town and start trying to figure out what various levels of a project might mean financially, so we can kind of make sure that there's not just rumors out there. We kind of have something that's a little bit in the ballpark of, you know, this is about what it might be, if we can get going with that. March 7th, there's a building committee meeting coming up at the LPA. The designers will do an initial presentation of some proposals of what they think are options for this project, based off everything they've heard and the space diagrams. March 15th, we're planning on having an all-boards meeting at the town hall with the Selectmen Finance Committee, School Committee, and the Building Committee. And they'll go through, share those initial proposals with a relative cost. So it's not going to be like a true dollar sign, but sort of like this would cost more than this one, you know? And try to get some feedback, probably having people vote after they kind of can look at those. That is a public meeting. People are welcome to attend that and hear those and vote even. And then on the 21st, there'll be a building committee meeting. And the goal will be to take their initial kind of big-picture proposals and try to trim those down to three that we want to continue with for further study. Ultimately, we need, the goal with the MSBA timeline is to have our preferred design by this June. Then they would work on actually drawing up the preferred design, getting concrete numbers for us. We would go to, hopefully, vote to fund the project, whatever it might be, in June of 2024. And a target completion for basically that, hopefully, when school opens in fall of 2027, that the project will be complete, whether that's a renovation or an addition or a new building. Some things could come, you know, if it ends up being a renovation, it might be a little longer because sometimes they were talking about that. It's one of the, if it's like a phased renovation, sometimes that can extend construction time. So one of the other things, if you look at the next page in here, you have, there's like a chart. So this is just, there are two enrollment options that the MSBA gave us. One is to look at, you know, a building project that's going to be preparing for 550 students in grades 5 through 8, or making a building project so that it can handle 700 students in grades 4 through 8. And, you know, one of the things we want to try to see is, you know, the designers are sort of asking like, it'd probably be better early on to try to figure which path we want to go. Because you don't want to do everything in like duplicate the whole way. Like, well, here's the 4 to 8 design, here's the 5 to 8 design. So this is sort of my, you know, I just looked at the enrollment here by school. And you can see how in 1718, there were 746 kids in that middle school, only 680 at the elementary school. And for the 1819 school year, we moved the 4th grade to the elementary school, reducing the enrollment at the middle school to 578 and increasing the enrollment at the elementary school to 824. We've kept that alignment consistent since then. You can see that the middle school has gone up, you know, with the 5 through 8, has gone up to 603, then it was at 581, 578, and this year it's at 545. And the elementary school went up to 837. In 2021, it's listed 755. But you've got to remember, that was the year of COVID, where we basically only did the preschool that we had to do. So we really didn't have preschool enrollment. Then back up to 817, and this year, the highest has been at 840. Also worth noting, you know, the high school has basically continued to rise now with an enrollment of 587 in this building. We have 1,972 students in the district right now, which is about 100 more than we had six years ago when I first came here. And one of the notes I made for the increase in the high school, it's not only that, but part of it was less Assabed admissions. So there's some notes on there along the way. So some future considerations when we look at this is universal pre-K. I know Joe Biden mentioned it again in his State of the Union address. You know, I think it's coming. Now, I don't think it'll come soon. I mean, I think this will be something that they'll give you time to, the federal government might say, maybe there's a mandate for it, but they're going to give you 10 years to figure it out or something like that. Because a lot of districts probably aren't going to have the space or infrastructure or whatever to just say, oh, yeah, okay, next year we'll get a grant and we'll do it. So, you know, big questions, where do we house more pre-K classes? I'd love to offer more pre-K classes now as it is, but we don't really have the space down there right now. And vocational enrollment, what if the Assabed admission pattern continues? And, you know, we'll see. We're still working on trying to figure out alternatives for vocational schools. But if we continue to have more and more students in the high school, you're looking at, you know, the option, the possibility of this building essentially being at capacity, right? So you would have the elementary school essentially at capacity and the high school essentially at capacity. So my biggest concern is moving, you know, is not wanting to build a school that all of a sudden in a year, you know, if we do, I say build a school, but do a school-building project that all of a sudden in a year or two years down the road, we feel like we're outgrowing that project already. And it's like, what can we even do? Or we just get that one done, and now we have to come back and say, hey, guys, now we need to go buy a building or add on to the elementary school because I need to get five more pre-K classrooms, you know? So, you know, personally, I feel like it's the smart move when you're looking long-term for us to pursue a grades 4 to 8 enrollment option. I think, the flip side of that, I do think that some of the feedback from the parent surveys, and I haven't seen all the compiled data yet, but it has said a lot of parents seem to want to keep 4th grade in the elementary school. But I don't, I also think there might be a little confusion there. Not confusion, but the sense that like, if we're doing a new building project and we know 4th grade's going to be there, we're going to design it for 4th graders, right? So it's going to have that feel. And the, and then I guess the other potential is, at some point, if it comes down to cost, right? A bigger building is more square feet. It's going to cost more, right? So at what point do you? But it's not necessarily dollar for dollar because it's probably not going to change the size of your library that much or your cafeteria that much. So those fixed things that you're adding, you know, it's not, it's not like you can say, well, it's going to be 20% more for that building. It's probably not 20%, but there's, you know, it's going to be something. So that's sort of the, you know, the data of where we're at. You know, I don't know if the committee has any thoughts on this subject, if there's anything you want me to relay to them, if we want to vote to endorse anything. It's up to you.
So this is really helpful to look at the trend of enrollment going back, you know, these six years. Is, are there models in town that are reliable to project enrollment through 2027 and, you know, 2030 and beyond in terms of, is our trajectory for enrollment? I mean, obviously, it looks like it's going up. it looks like it's going up, is that projected to continue? I think that would be helpful for me thinking about long-term the decision.
So the answer I could say to that, I think, is that the, we had to do that, that was a module with the MSBA. So one of our pre, when they came up with this 550 and the 700, we had to get all sorts of data from them, birth rates and census data and all that stuff. And they had a model that they used to kind of project everything. And that's where they landed on the 550 and the 700. I do think truly, one of the things that we're seeing a lot of now, particularly at like the elementary school, that's not captured in there, is this concept of kind of families sort of like doubling up. And, you know, like, and we're getting a lot of that, and that's not captured in birth rates. And that's not captured in new housing. We had to get all the data on, you know, permits that people looked at for new housing and that kind of stuff. So, so those aren't really, you know, it doesn't really, that's the part that we'd say was sort of missing, is it didn't have sort of this multiplier for what we're seeing, at least right now, which is more, like, more families in one structure. So that's, that's sort of the concern, is that if that is a trend that continues, that will, you know, I know, like, I know, the Sylvia loves having the fourth grade at her building and like yells at me every time I say they might move, but she's running out of spaces to put people. So, you know, we, the stage is already OTPT and, you know, we're trying to get as creative as we can with space, so.
Yeah, and I think once, to your point, like, once you build a building and it's there and you decided, just say, for example, you decided five through eight and you grow out of it, I mean, that bite of the apple's already happened. So to have to go back to the MSBA or build something larger or ask for an addition, you're just talking about something that's not going to be solved near term. So I think if we have the opportunity, it makes sense, I could see why the configuration of four to eight to maintain flexibility, reliability of to, you know, what we're going to grow into makes a lot of sense.
I agree. Are you looking for an endorsement from us?
If the board feels prepared to endorse something, then we could, we could tell that to the designers, that the committee has supported, you know, a four through eight or a five through eight configuration. If you don't feel comfortable to make that decision tonight, that's fine, but at some point, we'll probably come back to you and actually ask for a, you know, at least, because the other thing is eventually we need to, you know, we can do all this work we want, eventually we need to get this approved by the MSBA.
Sure.
And one of the things they're going to want to see is sort of, you know, does the school committee back?
Endorse it.
Yeah, so.
I mean, I'll make a motion to endorse the enrollment being four to eight for purpose of a second discussion in case there is any further. I'll make that motion to endorse four through eight.
Second?
I'm happy to second it.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
Oh, I mean, it's a no-brainer. I'd definitely go for the four through eight, but at the, at some point, it's going to come down to cost.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure we have to look at that. I mean, like you said, you don't want to get done with a brand-new project and outgrow it either, so.
Right. I agree.
But I would definitely think four to eight would be ideal.
I'm going to say the same thing, so.
All right. Paul, in favor of Matt's motion to endorse grades four to eight?
Yes. Thanks, Chris. Thank you. The next two in here, just sort of, you know, we always put the pages in from the plan, just to kind of remind us what we're doing. You know, the social, emotional, and physical wellness, opportunities, programs, and services. I do know, did we talk much to the board about when we had the Heron project come up here? Did we share that with you guys? That was in December, I think. But, you know, so I think that was a, you know, that fits right in here in some of these opportunities. And, you know, obviously we want to continue the safety committee, we've been continuing that. I'll give you a little bit of an update on, when we get down to safety committee meeting about some of the things that we're talking about in that arena as well. You know, for community engagement, I think a lot of these things that we have, we've done, but I also think, you know, we had a marketing meeting today, and I think that one of the things that we need to, we talked about was really trying to continue to build that messaging and communication, particularly, well, particularly around like a building project, right? I mean, that's, it's a major investment for the town, and I know we've made some opportunities to try to reach out and get, get community input, but they haven't been as, as well-attended at this point as we had hoped. So I think we've got to think about what are some other strategies that we can do to really try to engage people in this process, so. That's pretty much, pretty much it for that. Just quick, just kind of reminder of our strategic plan, which hopefully we're doing a new one in the fall. My next bullet on here, there's no backup in your, in your thing for, but I just want you to be aware of it. There are two environmental studies that are being done right now. One is at 150 School Street at the administrative building. As some of you may or may not be aware, there was an oil tank leakage at the church sort of next to that building. So this was probably a year or so ago, and they had to dig the tank out, and then they started doing oil contamination samplings and stuff in kind of in our, in our parking lot area. They're also doing some now, there's, I'm not sure if there's concern, but what he's trying to make sure is, there's an old oil tank that we don't use anymore, that was, it wasn't removed, this was back in like 1996, it was like, they didn't remove it, but they like filled it with like concrete or something like that. So it's in the, so it's still in the ground, but it's there. So he's doing some samplings, and one of the things they're just trying to make sure is that there's no contamination coming from that old tank in our lot. So that's just something that's kind of come to our attention. There's no data on it yet, he's just kind of giving me a heads up because he's doing the little drillings and basically puts little wells in, and they're looking at the groundwater that goes through, and then they try to map out, make sure that they can see where, if there's contamination in the water, where's, where's the likely source. There's a second one, same company is doing another one in the elementary school parking lot area, like right behind the fire station. I think if I, the situation, he explained to me if I, if I heard it right, I think the fire station did a training once with some sort of like fire suppressant chemical. And then that chemical, whatever was in that fire suppressant was then later, I think, decided to realize to be something that was deemed hazardous. So they've done a lot of work with the, this company has had to do work with the, sort of like the catch basin for the culvert and different things like that. And this has been an ongoing thing, and they've been filing reports with EPA, I guess, to try to say, you know, this is, it should be all set, it should be all set. One of the final things they want to do is they want to do borings tests in the pre-K playground area, right there, just to make sure there, there's no evidence of it, but basically to see if this stuff made it like out of the parking lot up into that area, they just want us to know. So we don't have those results yet, he's going to try to do those testing, that testing over February vacation, ask if we can do it then when there's no one in school. And then once we get the results, if there's anything that we would have to do, you know, we would do a mitigation plan, which at most typically would be, it would be, you know, they'd tell us what level of soil, and you'd have to scoop out the soil and just bring in new soil, so. The tiered focus monitoring, we are almost done with this thing. It's been going on forever. I think our corrective action plan, I think our last submission is due by the end of this week. And we got our special education program review, so I want to have Assistant Superintendent Braverman give you some of the highlights of what we're submitting to the state on special ed.
Oh, great. I see Dr. Meyer, Maya saved the best for last, and that's because I love special education. So if I go on too much, you can say, okay.
You can count on it.
All right, I knew, I knew I could count on you. So as we've talked about previously, we undergo on, we had undergone a big, big review, and Dr. Maya had explained last year that perhaps it looks like a small amount of criteria being 11, but under each number, it just seemed to go on forever and ever. And if you don't hit all of the benchmarks, then you didn't meet the criteria. Okay, so, out of 11 criteria that were set, 10 were found to be implemented. So the good news is, the district is in compliance with special education. The one area that, well, we weren't happy about it, but we understood was, we're supposed to have special education evaluated every two years. And that did not happen, and that's why we had this corrective action. When we look a little further as to why that didn't happen, COVID. We started the evaluation, so we were marked as partially implemented, then COVID set in. And so the program evaluation is finished now. Okay. So basically, this, we hired an outside consultant to look at our district, and basically, it boiled down to two questions. Students with disability, do they have access to inclusion and rigorous coursework for students with disabilities? The second relevant question she asked was, in achievement of students with disabilities as compared to other students who do not have disabilities, what is the growth rate? So again, access and equity, which you've heard so much about. Okay. So we boil it down, we found that in many ways, Clinton has a fair amount of work to do to become aligned where the state is with their percentages. And we don't want the state to be the standard that we climb in towards because we want to surpass that. And with that, we looked at the MCAS data. And again, same was true. Students who are included more tend to do better on the MCAS. Okay. So in the recommendations, one of the things that she really talks about is meeting the needs of all learners in the least restrictive environment. And that's the regulation with special education. But looking at how it's implemented in Clinton, there are a lot of things we can do to improve that. The Clinton Elementary School had, has established a co-taught model, which she felt was exemplary. And she sees districts all over the state, she has enormous amount of experience, and she felt that the classrooms that were so proficient, they actually rise to the expert level. And so they received a commendation and recognized that. The middle school and the high school shared that while they do have some classrooms labeled as co-teaching, they really don't have a true co-teaching model. And so we'll see in the recommendations, that's something that we want to incorporate or want to increase that. The commendation that the middle school and the high school received was that they have this flexible program that they've created for students who have social and emotional needs. At the high school, the program is co-facilitated with a special education teacher and a school counselor. It's in a very nice suite, so the management of all of that, the coming and going of students is very well-supervised. Our consultant actually had meetings with myself, the principals in all three buildings, along with the vice principals, and the director of early childhood and elementary, and then the department heads and team leaders. She used a variety of assessment tools that she incorporated into her analysis. And the key findings is that, you know, again, we really need to increase those opportunities for inclusion. Dr. Meyer and I have talked about a strategy as to how we may be able to do that incrementally. And so, plan right now is to really target fifth grade next year, because the elementary school has done such a nice job. So those fourth graders who are going into the fifth grade will be prepared to have a model similar to what they had been exposed to at the elementary. So we're excited about that. Like I said, I love special education, and I think that these recommendations are things in Clinton that we can certainly achieve. And I think that in a couple of years, the data will look very different, so I'm excited about that, too. Okay? Any questions?
I mean, I think what was encouraging was, I think, the commendations for the work, the hard work they're doing at the elementary school, and realizing that that's kind of, that's where we started, right? That was a school that was identified, that's where we've been putting in most of the effort. But also realizing that all along, the intent is kind of to roll this model up. You can't, you can't have students, you know, they're in a co-taught room for four years, and then they go to the middle school, and now it's a completely different model, right? So we knew this was happening. This year, co-teaching goes through grade three, so if we really start focusing on grade five next year, kind of even gives us one extra transition year because they'll be rolling out co-teaching in grade four at the elementary school next year. So hopefully we'll be able to stay sort of a year or two ahead and kind of keep, keep going with that to support everybody, so.
Continuity.
All right?
Thank you. Thank you.
The only other part for the tiered focused monitoring was the institutional self-evaluation that's for civil rights. We did a quick, we did a survey, and with, we had to do a survey with our, basically like our, some of our teachers of certain classes and advisors and stuff to look at some demographic things to try to make sure that we're not, you know, limiting, limiting participation. And also, I went on, we call them sort of like equity, mini-equity walks, I guess, with each principal and with Loretta this past week, where we were using one of the DESC equitable classroom look fours to gather some data. So I'm in the process of kind of compiling, compiling that data. That'll be the final submission that we'll need to make, hopefully, for our corrective action plan for that aspect, that's due by the end of this week. So I'll be pulling that together. All right. I think that's all I have from my report. We'll have a couple of things we'll have to chime in in the subcommittees.
Anything from curriculum?
Safety, that wasn't. Yeah, we had a meeting last week.
Yeah, I'd just say, the big things from the safety committee meeting, though, is we are looking at trying to replace the AEDs in the district. There are some models that are multilingual, and that's one of the things we want to try to, try to get. And even though our AEDs are serviced regularly and they are considered operable, the bulk of them were purchased back in, you know, 2007, so you're kind of getting to, you know, 15 years old almost. So we're looking at trying to replace some sort of the, there's some others changes that they've, they've made over the years. So, you know, we're technically in compliance with everything right now, but we're just looking to maybe upgrade it. One of the other things that came up was looking at potentially adding, it's called stop the bleed kits to the district, and that's usually just, it's kind of, they're usually just kind of get kits of tourniquets and gauze and stuff in case there was an incident where you needed to stop bleeding. And a lot of places, you can buy these kits and they put them, kind of, they mount them sort of near your AEDs in the building so they can, are easily accessible. So we're in the process of finalizing some numbers of, numbers of units and quotes and that kind of stuff. And obviously, before we purchase it, we'll bring it to, back through the safety committee or directly to you guys.
Steve, with the AEDs, are they, are there portable ones for like, like, I know you have them in the building, but I'll tell you, with the baseball diamond or the soccer field, does the trainers or the coaches have these?
Yeah, so I did talk to athletic director about that, that was one of the questions we had. In the fall and in the spring, we do have AEDs that, that live out in the sheds.
Oh, okay.
They're portable ones and they stay in the shed, so no matter what. And then there's another AED that when we have a game and we have a trainer and Laura's out there with like the, you know, we've got the gator going or whatever, there's an AED in there, too. So we have three that we're using for athletics, so.
Yes. Yes, Steve, I'd just say the only other thing that came out of that meeting was the potential near-term, long-term on just extending a technology rave mobile that the town has with, there could be opportunities just for.
Oh, yeah, for emergency.
Emergency communication.
Communication, yeah.
So I mean, not, it's just something we already have, so we're going to look further into, how do you specialize groups, where could we leverage it if, if it was needed through the school system as well? And it sounds like it's something we're already invested in, and Chief Coyne was saying, there's opportunities to customize it for support throughout the town, which could be really good.
Thank you. I'm excited about that.
We met today.
Yep, just not today, we just met tonight, and Steve kind of gave a.
Preview.
That's an instance of that, so. We did talk a little bit about our new, our new website, so kind of working out the, I think some few things there, but primarily, I, our focus will be on, you know, the marketing of our new school project, so.
All right, I see all these policies, so.
Yeah, so, met with Matt and we met with Amy Mason, the lead nurse, so these are all medical policies that were in there. Most, some of them have almost virtually no changes, we're just reviewing them. Some of them, if there are any changes, it's basically what we did is we adopted the MASC model. The only one that I'll ask that we. The only one that I'll ask that we just sort of table, because there are a couple of things I just want to clarify with, with Amy Mason, is JLCA. She had a couple of questions on that one. And I think that, I think it's, it's very minor, it's almost like, you know, it says submit a report, and it's like, well, we don't really, by submitting a report, like, we enter it into our SNAP program, so do we want to get more detailed about that or not? So, but I think we'll just, one more review to just kind of make sure that, that was one we tried to adapt more from the MASC, and it's sort of like, do we want to be more specific at all about our, our actual process? So I'd say hold JLCA, but I would say, I would recommend all the other ones for review and adoption.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the bundle of policies reviewed by the policy subcommittee with the exception of JLCA.
I'll second.
Any other disruptive discussion? Being in our favor? Thank you, next role. And negotiations are all done? Are they under old business? Is it under new business?
Just got one thing I want to highlight to you.
I'd be disappointed if it isn't.
Behind the bills, behind the bills of the, in your packet here, there's a second quarter financial report. I forgot to put it on the agenda itself, but I did want to still give it to you, you're not taking any action on it. So it's just really more of an information purposes, just gives you a snapshot. You'll see a lot of the salary lines are overspent at this point, a lot of them kind of balance out, but it's really because a lot of that is based on the final contract numbers versus, we hadn't settled the contract when we did the budget, right? But overall, when you look at our bottom line, even with our encumbrances, we still have, it looks like about $350,000 that's, that's unencumbered. So I think we'll be, I think we're trending okay, we'll keep an eye on that. And I do know that some of that salary in a pinch could possibly be moved to grants if we needed to, some of the ESAR grants, but we're also, there's also a balance report on there, because we, obviously, as you said, we want to try to, in the previous preliminary budget, I want to try to carry some of that ESAR over for funding for next year, too, so. But I think we're, we're doing all right.
Great.
What else? Under new business? I have a motion to adjourn.
You got it, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Enjoy the vacation.
Eight oh seven, that still wasn't that bad.
No, no. Your sir Mac talked a little slow.
You must have bet the over.
Yeah.
Welcome back. I'm seeing you. You're the worst. Don't move.
I would have already tested.
Drinking all that wine, now I gotta make it home.
See, that's just in my.
Oh, from last time. Thank you, thank you.
More clutter for your house.
Thank you.
Let's go schooling, get these mics out of here. Seriously, come on. Damn, did we get your good side, bro?
Yeah, I think so.